Good evening and welcome to Letherton Village. This is a special meeting for the City Council. I invite, oh, nope, I need to call Roqah. I'm City Manager.
Mayor Garrett?
Here.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Present.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Present.
Councilmember Stallings?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite everyone to say the flag of allegiance.
My flag, ladies, is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, we need to amend it by adding the proclamation to declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
I'll make a motion to add declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day to the agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's been added. Okay, so now I need to do the approval of the agenda.
I'll make an emotion to approve the agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion for it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. You need to approve the, well, you don't have to approve the consent agenda at this point, right? Okay. There is no public comment needed? Well, hmm, no. So move right into the action items. First up is going to be a discussion update from the Infrastructure Committee, and I will hand that over to Mayor Protim Cantor. Thank you.
All right, so I've been briefing you guys along the way as we've been, we've been working through the Infrastructure Committee with what's been happening. And tonight, I want to give a more detailed update, get into a little bit more detail than I've been before. But what I just passed out was, was a very rough draft. I'll repeat that again, rough draft. Infrastructure Committee has not approved this yet. They haven't seen it. We're in between meetings, but I took a first attempt at writing, capturing all that we've talked about and writing it into a recommendation that we will, this one, first one here is on sidewalks, and hopefully, we will be approving that at our June 11th Infrastructure Meeting and then recommending it to Council in the regular June, June meeting. Again, it is a draft. I've, I've added a few things here based on, you know, how I feel about the committee is, what they're thinking, so, but again, they have not, not approved this yet. But basically, with respect to the sidewalks, our goal for sidewalks, as it says up here, is to ensure all sidewalks, both residential and those in the business corridor, are maintained in a safe, uniform manner according to code and have a visually pleasing look. So, as our, for our recommendation, we actually split it into two. So we have a recommendation for the business corridor and a separate recommendation for the residential piece. So for the business corridor, our City Manager, Cheryl Mitchell, has already and proactively been having the DPW on whatever little extra resources, time and resources they have to actually do the assessing of the business corridor. So the business corridor assessment is actually complete. The sidewalks have been marked and logged and entered into ARC GIS. And so, overall, we're going to recommend, or most likely, we'll recommend that the sidewalks that have been marked as defective will be replaced by mid-October. We're going to recommend that building owners should be, should be notified by roughly around mid-July with giving them the option to repair it on their own or have the city do it. And then we recommend that the city be seeking out a contractor to do the work for those people that don't want to repair it themselves and then pass the cost on to the property owners. So that's, that's, for the business corridor, again, some of that may be subject to change based upon further discussions in the, in the Infrastructure Committee. On the residential side, it's a little bit bigger of a task because we've got, I don't know, what is our area? Four, two square miles? One total? 1.5, something like that? Yeah.
Two, two and a half.
All right, I got one and a half and two and a half.
Two and a half.
But basically, we've got a lot of sidewalk that needs to be, to be marked. And so what we've talked about is using a citizen brigade of trained assessors. So basically have our code enforcement official, trained volunteers to what the rules are in terms of making, or what the criteria are for sidewalks to be considered defective, training them on how to mark those sidewalks and then how to, how to log and record them. Based on discussions with our, with our City Attorney, there, there is some liability with doing that in, in the fact that, you know, a resident assessor may miss, you know, say you've got two pieces of concrete that are over two inches in differential height and they miss that and don't mark that, then the city could be liable because, and I guess not protected, right? Because they weren't a city employee.
Correct.
And so what the recommendation is, is that these, these trained assessors go out and do the brunt of the work, you know, marking all the sidewalks. And then it should be a relatively quick task for a code enforcement official or officials to actually just walk and review, just look and see if anything was missed or were there things that were marked that shouldn't have been marked to basically put their stamp of approval on it. And then, and then, once that's done, similarly to what we've done in the past and what we're proposing for the business corridor, letters would go out, residents would have, I put in here based on, on what we've done in the past, would have 10 days to indicate whether they want to repair it themselves or have the city do it. And then the city would then choose a contractor and bill back to the residents for, for those flags that are required to be repaired. And we, and I put a, you know, kind of a timeline in here in the recommendation, but again, this needs to be finalized by the, by the committee before we, before we recommend it to Council. So questions on sidewalks?
Bruce, will the residents be billed directly by the vendor, by the contractor?
Billed by the city, right? Is that how we do it in the past?
It was my understanding that the past program was that the city paid for it and then billed it back as a special assessment to the property, giving them a period of time to repay that assessment.
Right.
They're about to fix that number seven, I think, I hear you saying.
Yeah.
Looks like it's.
So Kenny, I think it's really, really great report, first of all. And the, the, going back to the business corridor, so the business owners don't know that this is happening right now? Do they know that?
Nor do the residents. I mean, they may know because they, in the fall, when they started doing this and they started marking, they were spraying the sidewalks. And so as you walked up and down, you'd see that sidewalks were marked. And that's usually how, how people know the, the, in fact, we had already started doing the residence, resident marking, and there was already chatter about, you know, my sidewalk was marked, what does that mean?
I know and I understand that, but I'm thinking that as quickly as this business is going to happen with the businesses, so you're going to do the assessment and then tell them. They won't know.
Right, because we need to know what, we, we can't tell them until we know what to tell them, right? So if they have.
I guess, you know, it's just a thought.
Yep.
It's just a thought, just communication on what's happening, because when we tell our story upfront, nobody else can tell our story, right? But it's just a thought that maybe we just introduce the fact that we're doing this just to, and that this is what we're planning to do so that we can tell our own story.
Yeah, that's a good, good suggestion. Maybe we could have Suzie do that, since she's kind of the economic development coordinator, would that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll put that in the recommendation. But the other, I just realized, I left off one, one big and key piece on that. The business corridor, we're recommending the sidewalks be replaced by mid-October of this year, and then the residential will be doing starting next year. So we would, we would train the assessors, you know, probably late winter, give them a couple months to, to do their assessments and then have the code enforcer review the assessments and then get that program out. So one, so businesses are this year, residential will be next year.
Which makes sense. And it looks like you can have the code, did I read it? Maybe I read it wrong. Code enforcers are going to go out after the assessors.
Right.
And just, okay, very good.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
So residential, so your, the business is going to be completed by October 15th, but you also, but you have October 15th as residential also?
This says 2020.
2020, sorry.
Yeah. Missed it.
Yeah.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Which I thought was a good idea. At first, I was thinking, why don't we just do it all? But I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And to get the residents involved is a, is a good, good idea, so.
Okay, no other questions, then we'll go on to the, the bigger one, which is the roads and ditches. So a couple this way, a couple that way. All right, again, reminder, this is a draft. And again, the, the, while, while the committee has unanimously backed this, we still haven't put together the final recommendation and voted on it. So there are many things in here that still could, could change in one direction or the other. But basically, our goal is to rehab all city residential roads, keyword there being "all" and being "residential," within six, within a six-year period, and to improve the function of the storm ditch system. And then we are, would expect that all things going well would, the project would begin in, in the spring of 2021. So as some background, which I think most people here know, but people who are watching this, you know, may not, the last comprehensive residential road project that we had in Letherton took place 50 years ago in 1969. So the fact that the roads, you know, are 50 years old and, and you have, you know, over the past several decades, you had the combination of effects between Proposal A, the Headley Amendment, reduced state shared revenue, and of course, the real estate crash in 2008. You know, there just hasn't been the money for appropriate residential road maintenance and upkeep, and as a result, our roads have, the degradation has accelerated dramatically. And then also, our ditches, everybody knows, anybody who tries to walk in the city knows that the, you know, anytime there's a rain, the ditches fill up, the whole, sometimes whole streets fill up and backs up onto the sidewalks, which, you know, brings insects and animals and degrades the concrete on people's driveways, or their approaches and the driveways and the sidewalks. And then a couple other things that, that causes that aren't quite as obvious as one is the, the road water doesn't have a place to drain, the ground stays wet longer, and so a lot of that water seeps underneath the road and causes, causes damage to the road. And then also, because the sewer pipes, you know, are more likely, when the water's not draining, are more likely to be sitting in water. Anywhere where there's a crack in the line, you get inflow and infiltration, so you get a lot of arid water that ends up going through the sewer system instead of the stormwater system, and they ends up, ends up in the tank. And so, you know, big rainstorms, that could cause the tank to fill up. Tank fills up, then we either have basements over, you know, filling with sewage, or we do a sanitary sewer overflow and get fined by the DEQ. And we're under mandate from the DEQ to try to reduce our inflow and infiltration, and so this is another way of also helping out with that. So our recommendation, again, this was unanimous in the committee, was to work on all roads in the city. So that will include reconstruction, so those roads will need to be completely ripped out, down to their core 12 inches below the road surface and reconstructed, rehabbed, which is a little bit less of an intensive process. And then you also have resurfacing, which is the, the least intensive. So this would include paving, this would also include paving the almost two miles of gravel roads that we have.
Oh, good.
And then those roads that are currently concrete roads that will, are in the category of full reconstruction would be reconstructed with asphalt. It's significantly cheaper.
Yep.
And then the, the way that we would focus the project is, you know, we would, we would put up priority at the beginning of the project on a lot of the roads with the, the lower Paser ratings. So Paser is a, a, you know, rating of how good or bad a road is, with one being the worst, 10 being the best. So the ones that are at a three, four, and five level, those are the ones that are okay, but you know, the, the, if we let them get worse, we could end up having to do a full reconstruction as opposed to just doing a rehab. And reconstruction versus a rehab is about a $600,000 per, per mile difference. So we want to keep those from degrading worse so that the cost isn't, isn't tremendous for us or much more than it should, than it could be. And then those that have, currently have a high Paser rating, you know, roads that have been resurfaced in the last, you know, 10 years or so, you know, those, those would get a, just a, a simple reservice, you know, cold knoll off the top and then re, re, put a new, new top on them. The cost of the project, you'll notice in the, in the, the second page towards the bottom, there's a lot of XXs in there.
Yep.
That's because there's a lot of things going in. It's kind of a moving target. I can tell you that the overall cost is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 million plus or take a, a couple. We will, you know, I, I, when we do the recommendation, we will put the millage rate in and the, the, you know, what, what the cost will be for the average resident and, you know, per $100,000 of taxable value and so forth. But the reason why we're not doing that now is because we want to refine the, the estimate a little more, and in order to do that, we need to do core samples, and our city engineer, Scott, is here to talk about that a little bit later. We have an agenda item to talk about approving a project to get these core samples so that we know what's under each road so that we can refine the, the estimate a little better. And then also, we're waiting, we had a meeting last week with our, our bonding agent, and they're going to propose to us several different scenarios based upon how we issue the bonds, and that can have a big effect on what the, what the millage number actually is, whether it's, you know, one bond or a series of, of, a bond with a three issuance.
Three issuance.
Three issuance.
Yeah.
Or four, you know, depending on how we, how we go about that. But, so we will get numbers in there soon, but just for your reference, we're talking roughly about $20 million. Also, with, with respect to the bonds, I put a couple, maybe more detail than we want to get into here, but there, there is a, a regulation, state regulation, that a city can't have bond obligation of more than 10% of the state equalized value, which is roughly about 20 million, which is what we need, but the, we're going to structure the, the bond issuance so that we're, we're not maxing out that debt. In fact, we're actually going to do it, I, I put in here 80%, I think that's what you said. And then we were going to have, try to keep it an 80%, or 20% cushion in there, so if there was an emergency, if a tornado knocks over City Hall, we have to do an emergency bond issuance to rebuild it, we still have some, some ability to do that.
There's a cushion.
So we're not, we're not putting ourselves in a, backing ourselves into a corner. And then there were, there were a variety of, of, that you may be wondering about as you read through this, there were a variety of regulations that, that City Attorney and I went back and forth on. And basically, since we would be doing a millage to repay this bond debt, the, the millages that are, the mills levied as, as part of paying back bond debt are not subject to all the, the rules, like the charter, you know, our charter says we can't have more than 20 mills, so it doesn't count towards that. It doesn't count towards the, there's a 2% rule, which says that you can't, a city can't levy more than 2% of their taxable value, doesn't count towards that. So it's, it basically operates as its, as its own animal. And as I said, we would be looking to do a millage in, in November. We have to have the millage language in by August 13th to the, to the county. So working backwards, you know, we really need to get our recommendation in hopefully by the, our July meeting, so we don't have to have a special meeting, but that's going to depend on when we get core samples back and get the scenarios from our bond agent. We did make the decision not to include 11-mile road in, in, in the project. We wanted to keep it, for two reasons. We wanted to keep it a residential project, and then we also felt that since while, the six years while this project is going on, we're not going to be using our general fund monies to be paving roads, because it's all going to be included as part of the project. So the Act 51 money that we've been getting, and to some extent, the, the money that we've been dedicating towards the roads could still go into that road fund and build that fund so that the end of six years, you know, we'll have a pretty large sum there, which, which pretty much should be able to cover all, if not most, of rebuilding 11 miles when, when the time comes for that. And then with the, the other thing the committee talked about was that it really didn't make sense to do the road project without addressing the ditches, especially because as we do the road project, a large number of driveway approaches are going to get cut up and have to be redone. And as long as we're doing that, culverts underneath them could be replaced. So any culvert that's not working functionally would, would be replaced, the ditches would be regraded, and the culverts that were functioning, excuse me, would be, would be cleaned out, jetted out. And so that would, would do quite a bit towards making our storm system function a lot better and getting rid of, you know, these huge puddles that we've all been, we've all been dealing with. And then, the last thing we talked about, we started talking about it at our last meeting, was that if Council approves this to go on the ballot and, well, if they approve it to go on the ballot, then that our next step as a committee will be beginning to work on a education campaign, because obviously, we're going to need to educate the, the residents in terms of why we're in the situation that we're in. And the good thing is, is in, in my limited experience so far, you know, proselytizing for the roads, as you explain it to people, they get it. And they realize, okay, this, this isn't something that the city's been neglecting because we wanted it neglected, it's just, pretty much just dollars. And so, so we need to educate people on, you know, things like Prop A and Headley and the crash and why we're not recovering from the crash, even though it was, how many years ago, 11 years ago? It won't be for another, at least we heard today, for another 15 years?
A long time.
Probably 18.
Yeah. So to get back to 2008 revenue levels, you know, we're, we're talking 2027 at best, you know, assuming a streaming economy for the next, you know, seven or eight years. I think that was it. Again, I documented it all in here, so you guys can read the details, but any questions you have?
Yes.
Which are going to be many.
I have many questions.
Yeah.
Please bear with me. Okay, so.
That's why this gentleman's sitting here, too.
Thank you. Okay, so, let me start with, okay, so the Paser scale. You explained that those roads that are at three, four, and five, obviously, they're going to be redone, right? So if you have a road that's, let's just say we have a road that's like a seven, but it needs maybe like a storm drain or a, or a, yeah, storm drain repair, because we do have a couple of roads, like, right at the end, there is a storm drain, it may need repair, but the road itself seems to be fine? Is there a plan to kind of implement a newer road? I mean, you're just going to grade at seven. You're grading at seven as opposed to replacing that road?
Well, you'd be resurfacing it.
Resurfacing, sorry.
Right.
Resurfacing and taking off a couple.
I'll, I'll let you address that, but I know, I know the, you know, everything on the roads that they, that we would be doing would be, would re-level, the manholes would be re-levelled, driveways would be re-levelled, landscape would be repaired.
So like a condition seven road today, make the assumption that in six years, it'll be a condition four or five, maybe a six.
Right.
So, you know, is what we did is we would put the, the condition seven roads at the end of the project, so they're, they've still got a good service life, and we'll use that service life, resurface them at the end of the program, along with doing ditching.
Okay, so, but my question is, let's just say you have a, a storm drain that is in need of repair, but the road is at a seven. You're just going to regrade it, or are you going to just say, you know what, since we have to do that storm drain, we might as well take care of this road? Like redo the road? Because you're going to have to do that storm drain no matter what.
Well, the storm drains are the ditches, so you're really not.
I'm sorry, not the, not the, the ditches, storm drains, but there is a, there is a...
Talking about a manhole?
A manhole. Yeah, we have some that are, you know, in need of major repair?
Well, I mean, if it's an emergency, it should be done sooner than later. If it's not an emergency, then you could wait until that road's being worked on. If it's a sewer issue, typically these days, we line the sewer, so there's really no excavation, you know, unless it's got a big hole in it that needs to be excavated and repaired.
Right.
So typically, that's done without excavation.
Right. Well, we do have a few that may need some, you know, closer eyes. I think you probably already know there's some out there. So those are the ones I'm talking about, but if you have a plan in place to, you know, maybe that.
Not just a plan, but there's a budget number in the estimate to, to do some storm sewer work.
You accounted for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was really the main part of my question. So the other part of my question is, and I'm going to say taxes, and you know what I'm going to say. Right, we know the answer to this, but I think we need to speak to it since we're on camera. You know, there are going to be people that say, hey, we pay a lot of taxes, this should cover everything. So can we, I know this is a standalone millage, so can we speak to that so people understand?
Let me, let me say two things to that. One is I'm, I'm not prepared to give a number right now.
Right.
The number, the number will be.
I agree.
We have a quite broad range depending on how the, the bond issuance is set up, but one big part of our education campaign will be walking the taxes through.
Okay.
So, you know, for, for example, we pay roughly about 60 mills, okay? And, and, you know, we get the comment constantly, we, everyone sitting up here has gotten the comment, well, we pay really high taxes, and we do. But what most people don't realize is that only a third of what the city actually, you know, the check you, people write to the city, only a third of that goes to the city. And then when you start looking at it, and you say, all right, well, that, that, that one-third slice comes to us, well, immediately, you lock half of that off the top because it goes straight to the police department. And everybody here wants, you know, a strong police, effective police department. Right, now you're left with, I can't do the math off the top of my head, but.
You're good.
But, but, you know, a sixth or whatever, whatever it is, it goes to the city, and that, that, that's to run the entire rest of the city.
Yeah.
And so, you know, and Celine can attest to this, is when we had our first committee meeting, I, I started out by doing a, you know, Finance 101, going, talking about Headley and Prop A, and when you start working them all together, what it does, and, and then where the taxes go, and showing them the pie charts and so on, and the light went on. And, you know, they were, oh, the city really doesn't get that much. And so I think it's going to be really important to, you know, we talked in the committee about things like town halls, door-to-door, meet and greets, you know, resident hosted, you know, group meetings, things like that, to, to really educate the residents, and those were some of the things that we talked about.
Yeah.
As well as, and this is what, you know, our, our state senator, you know, Jerry Moss, Jeremy Moss, said that they used in Southfield would be a, a document showing everybody, here's, here's a map of Letherton Village, you know, this color means it's happening in 2021. This color means your road is getting done in 2022, 2023, so people can look at that and it becomes real.
Yes.
It's, okay, that's my road, that's when it's going to happen. So we've started talking about, you know, you know, what would have to happen to, you know, because it's going to be, you know.
Conversation.
It's going to be a conversation, because it's, you know, we all, we all want the roads and ditches fixed, that's what we hear constantly, but there's, there's no magic bucket of money that somebody's going to give us, you know. When you, when they talk about, you know, when you hear all of what's going on in Lansing about, you know, how are we going to fix the roads?
Right.
They're not talking about these roads.
Right.
They're talking about, you know, Southfield Road.
Main Fair.
696, but they're not talking about Sunny Brook.
Right, right.
So we have to figure that, that out on our own. There's, you know, there's no money for that other than what we can get from our taxpayers. So if the taxpayers say they don't want it, then, you know, we could potentially go back to repaving 0.4 miles of road a year.
Okay.
So, you know, we've, we've got to educate people on why we're doing this and, and how it just came about and so forth.
Okay, a couple, a couple more questions.
Let me just add to that real quick. So Bruce is right on with that whole thing, that, that explanation. And so our task is going to be to educate and just make our residents aware of what's, what's been going on. And, and, you know, the tax revenue that we actually get for the roads only allow, allows us, what Bruce said, 0.4 miles per year of road repair. We have like over 26 mi, 20?
21 paved miles.
21 paved miles of roads in the city. So as time goes on, the roads just keep getting worse and worse, and the Paser rating that we talked about earlier.
Yep.
An analysis was done on the roads using that Paser scale, and I think like almost half the roads maybe were in poor condition, you know, so our road, this project has come about, everybody knows this, because our roads are really bad right now. They're really bad.
Yeah.
And as, just a continuous repair from year to year is not going to do it anymore. We have to have a bigger, bigger project to kind of try to make it as good as possible for the city.
Yes, and it's, it's accelerating, the degradation rate is accelerating. It's because, because we're only doing 0.4 miles.
As we speak, one more winter like we had.
Yeah.[1793.66]
As we speak, one more winter like we had previously really take us out.
Freezing rain, anything.
Yeah, so that, that, that test that you just talked about.
Pacer.
Yeah. How long ago was that done?
2017, so we do it every two years, so the next one should be this, this one.
Wow.
So we, and we...
You said half the roads were...
That's in the, that's in the other room, the, the...
I don't think the Pacer is that, you're thinking, you're thinking of the water mains.
Oh, okay, I thought, but I thought we had one.
Yeah.
I couldn't find the, yeah, there's a, this is like a picture graph of...
What was deteriorated?
Yeah, the, the...
It says one right here.
But there's another one, the bar graph that shows like kind of which ones...
It's in, it's in our draft study.
Yeah, I got, I got a big copy.
That's the one, yeah.
But, so this Pacer scale is done by visual inspection, right?
It's a surfacing evaluation, it's driving down the street, yeah.
And that's why, that's why, and to, to lead into, that's why, you know, when we get to it in the agenda, that's why the core samples are necessary, because that will give us a lot more information about what's actually under, under the road. And as Scott has said in our committee a couple times, you know, based on his experience, you know, he's expecting that a lot of the roads that, you know, are at ones and twos, which call for, typically call for a full reconstruction, the underlying substrate is, is hopefully will be good, and, and the project will actually cost us a little bit less, because instead of doing a, you know, 1.2 million per mile rip out of that road, we're doing a, you know, $700,000, $800,000 rehab, still being able to save some of the underlying structure, so.
Okay, so a couple more questions. So we're not including 11 mile. What is the Pacer scale for 11 mile right now?
I honestly don't know that. The count, or Semcog actually does 11 mile. I want to say the three sections that aren't being done this summer are in fair condition.
Okay.
So that's probably a, sorry, three or four, four or five.
Okay, so we're, by next year, we won't be there.
Yes.
Because, you know what I mean?
Sorry.
No, go ahead, it's fine.
I was just going to say Semcog has an online tool, so you can just go on the website and look it up.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so culverts, so we don't have a program for culverts currently, so when we do these culverts, did we include any kind of program to cover that once we complete those new culverts?
I mean, ongoing?
To, to maintain them?
Well, I think that's something, City Council, I mean, we, we could, we could talk about that, I mean, I assume the infrastructure committee is going to go on for a while, but, you know, we can definitely talk about ongoing maintenance. I mean, it is the, the residents' responsibility for maintaining the culvert, and part of the, part of the reason why we're in the situation that we're in with, with the storm sewers is because it hasn't been enforced.
Right.
There hasn't been the code enforcement to do so, and so they've gotten bad people, we've had instances where people have just filled them in and grassed over. It's, you know, or, you know, I can, I constantly go back to the example on my street, the neighbor across the street has a tree that, that's root literally blocks the whole culvert, and the design of that, our street, is to flow towards his house, and he's the end street. So the whole street backs up because of that, that tree. So it hasn't been made. So, so yes, we, we should talk about how we maintain them going forward.
Right, I bring it up not for us to take it on as a responsibility, but just to have a comprehensive plan, once we get the culverts completed, just say, okay, from now on, this is where we're going with it, as far as maintenance.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Uh, let's see, I think that's the last, last question I have.
But I think, I think, I think the, the culvert issue should be, again, something, I don't want to say the, the residents will get excited over culverts, that's probably a bit of a strike.
You might be right.
But, I mean, the, the ability of, or the, the, doing this simultaneously with the road project is going to save the residents, individual residents, a lot of money, because if we didn't do this in conjunction with the road project, and, and we did, you know, because we, we've been talking in the committee about just doing a separate, you know, ditch maintenance, culvert repair.
Yep.
People would have to pay to have their driveway ripped up, culvert replaced, driveway repaved.
Yep.
That's a big project. But now, you know, we're already going to have a lot of the driveways ripped up, we're going, the machinery's already out there, so it, it becomes a much less expensive task. And actually, that reminds me too, I also forgot to mention that, to the extent that we can, we will also coordinate our water main replacement with the building of the roads. Because one thing you don't want to do, I, I don't think we can fully avoid this, but we're going to do our best to avoid it as much as possible, is, you know, you don't want to put a, a brand-new road in, and then a year later, have to take the, you know, three feet of the side out and dig it out to put in the water main in and then repave over it.
Right.
So to the best that we can, we will, you know, try to do the water mains at the same time, so. It'll be a lot going on, but it'll definitely make a, a big difference infrastructure-wise.
Okay, and that's a separate page here.
Well, that's, that's, we, we've talked about the, the water system, which is, is a big part, it, it probably should be our number-one priority, but the, but, you know, people don't see the water, we, you know, they're talking about that today at our conference, you know, it's underground, you know, so it's, to them, it's not as, as big an issue, but our water system is old, you know, a lot of it was put in in 1920, and these pipes have a 50-year life, which is why we have, you know, what is it, I forgot the number, 15 to 30 water main breaks a year.
Oh, yeah.
I forgot where I was going with that, but, yeah, oh yeah, so, so the committee has, we started talking about the, the water system, but because of the impending deadlines for the ballot in November, we kind of pushed that as, as a secondary, so once we get these recommendations done, we'll go back and we'll start tackling water and figuring out, you know, how we're going to try to replace a little bit more water main every year than what we're doing now.
Right. Just one last question on culverts. So the biggest concern I have, so once we get new culverts in, we're going to have an increase in water flow, because you, you won't have any restrictions at that point. And we will have, we have a tank that can handle that, but...
Wait, wait, that, that water doesn't go to the tank?
The...
The water, the water in the ditches and the culverts doesn't go to the tank?
It's going through...
That's, that's the, so the storm, the storm?
You've got a storm drain in some of the culverts. There's a storm drain right at the end of my street.
Right, so the culvert water goes to the storm drain, the storm drain goes out to the Rouge. You've got your sewer system that goes to the culvert.
Oh, sorry.
It's happened to the tank.
Tank.
Let's make it even more confusing.
Yeah, I think we're both confused.
Goes to the, goes to the, goes to the tank.
I'm confused, that's why I'm mistaken.
Yeah, so they're separate systems.
But regarding the water main, so, I wasn't talking about the water main, I was actually talking about the sewer system. So the sewer system, when we do an update, clearly, we're going to have increased flow, because those pipes, I mean, you're going to have some pipes that are clogged, and I think we talked about that. When you start having increase in flow as you go to the, to the tank, are we doing any updates to the tank at that point? Is it included in infrastructure?
When you update the ditching and the culverts, that's not going to increase your flow to the tank, it's going to increase the flow out to the Rouge, you have separate systems.
Okay.
So the storm's all by itself, and it goes out to the Rouge River.
Maybe what you're thinking about is what I said about...
Sanitary sewer goes to the tank.
Maybe, maybe you're confusing what I said a little bit earlier. So, so one of the problems that our sewer system has is inflow and infiltration, so water that gets into the sewer system that shouldn't be there.
Right.
And that's bad, because it ends up filling up our tank, if you get a heavy rain, the tank fills up with all water.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, so, so fixing of the, of the ditch system will help reduce inflow and infiltration, because the sewer lines that are located near the ditch, right now, when you get a heavy rain, the storm water isn't draining, so that pipe is sitting in water.
Right.
And so if there's a crack in that pipe, the water goes in the crack and goes right down, you know, it's, it's a gravity-based system, so it goes, oh my God, I'm, I've learned way more about this stuff than I ever wanted to know, but it's a gravity-based system, so it, the water just goes into the tube and, and the pipe, sewer pipe, and it just flows to the tank. So that's what we, that's what the ditching, improving our dip system will...
Is to eliminate.
Will help eliminate.
Correct, okay. I have to go the other way around, my fault.
So dealing with the water main, it said here that you're going to do coordinate planned water main replacements, so I'm assuming that you already know there's already been some investigation on the water main?
Well, the, the city has a 20-year plan in the capital improvement to replace water mains, so we have specified some projects we think could be important, especially to assist with the fire capabilities.
Okay, so this plan is just based on what we, our plan, not necessarily an investigation that you get, or you're anticipating something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we looked at areas that had undersized water mains, that had frequent water main breaks, that also assisted in, in the hydraulics of the water main to assist in fire protection.
Okay.
We've already replaced most of the fire hydrants.
We haven't had any problems with the hydrants, though.
We don't have any issues with hydrants.
We haven't had, yeah, I was going to ask. We haven't had any issues with the hydrants.
There's been some issues.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, there's been some issues.
Most have been replaced.
No, there hasn't been any replacements. The last program, I think, to replace hydrants was the...
2015?
Mid to late 90s.
I just, I thought you guys just replaced like two or three.
Oh, there could be a few, but you have two or three hundred of them.
I've seen, I've seen a couple that's just replaced.
There's not a program that was replacing it.
And that has nothing to do with this, though. Hydrants have, have nothing to do with this program.
The water main replacement would replace hydrants along that section of water main, yes.
Okay.
There's a lot to do with the water issue, too.
Yeah.
There's a lot to do, and, and we've got recommendations on what needs to be done, but like, as Bruce said earlier, we're focusing on this road stuff first because of the deadlines that are coming up. There is a plan to address the water main issue, too, because that's a big deal. The sewer system is our best system right now, right? We don't need as much work there, but the water system does, the water mains do need work, but, and we'll address that, but...
And it's coming next year.
That's what, that's most likely what we'll be working on after we get these two recommendations finalized and to, and will send to Congress to, to council. Yeah, no, we'll, we'll go back and start working on, on water, and, you know, we've got some ideas of how we might be able to raise some money for, to do a little bit more than what we've been doing in terms of water main replacement.
But to stay focused on this now, is it possible, because I'm sure we're going to be talking about this more in future council meetings, is it possible just to have like a mock-up of the timeline of what everything looks like, you know what I mean?
For, you mean, once the project starts?
For when, so people have questions, you know?
What needs to be done.
Yes, exactly, so like you said, August 13th is the millage language due, okay, once that's done, what happens next? What do we do next? What is this? Just to have a flow, so the council can have that also, so it's always in front of us what's going on.
We'll, we'll be working on that once we start with like the, the education campaign, that'll all be part of it, you know, timelines and maps.
No, I'm saying for council to actually...
So we're saying the same thing, because after this, right?
I can tell, I can tell you, it's just pretty straightforward.
And I mean, not to tell us at this time, just it's a possibility, just future for us, so we, so we'll know, and we'll have it written, for me, I need to have it written out just to see what's going on.
I can send you that.
I appreciate it, that's all, just to have that, so we know. So anyone have any additional questions? I know it's overwhelming.
Yeah, it's...
But I must say...
More like you're a part of it.
And I, believe me, I talk to him more than you know about this, but, um, do you want...
Sorry, I, maybe you could tear the curtain back a little bit. So you're a part of the infrastructure committee.
He's the, he's leading.
People that are watching don't know that, we're not all a part of that committee.
Yeah, so, so that's why we're asking questions. I'm, I'm chairing the committee.
Okay.
Joe Robinson, all, the, the other four members are residents, it's Joe Robertson, Hugo Cardenas, Mike Keenan, and Greg Rubolo. Saleem is, is also, also helping. Cheryl comes to the meetings occasionally, our treasurer Pam Brachi, and then, and then Scott, three members of the city of the year who's with us.
So I think this was, it was something that we all decided to do at the beginning of this last year, or something, just to start putting these, to put these type of study groups together, and I can't remember if we volunteered or you volunteered.
Oh, I volunteered. I, I, I definitely volunteered.
So you did a, you all have been doing a tremendous job. This is very thorough, and I appreciate it, well, we appreciate it.
Well thought out.
Yeah. So does anyone have any additional questions about this?
I think my biggest concern is 11 mile road next year, because it's at three or four now next year. You know, we've got some areas that are in really great need this year, so, I mean, we could collect, we could save the money and ultimately do it, but, you know, I don't know, we might have to, I'm not saying add it, I'm just saying rethink a, a strategy for that.
So, I mean, one of the strategies, I mean, if, if projects go good, they come under bid, you may have some extra bond money at the end and can go to 11 mile.
Yeah.
It's, it's just kind of not included at this point. The other thing is we'll keep submitting for, for federal funds on that.
Yeah.
Them are drying up a little bit, the road commission's taking a lot more money than they used to.
Okay.
So a lot less money going around to all the locals.
And we don't know what's going to happen in Lansing, so.
And the at 51, how much is that?
It's about 380 for major streets, and I think we have about 64, actually, no, I got it right.
That's about 400 that'll go back into the budget, then?
No, it'll go into the road, the road account.
I mean, into the road, the road account, okay, yeah.
And I think the biggest, least, the biggest complaint that I hear in the read are the residential streets more than I've even heard, more people complain about 11 mile, I think that they can stomach that more than they can stomach the residential.
Yeah, I think just overall, and then we can move on. So, and I know we talked about sidewalks, but, you know, the last time we did sidewalks was in 99, and it was a big issue because of the price that came in, and I think former Mayor Brock and, and that council had to say, hey, okay, we've got a lot of complaints here, the price may be too high, let's really lean on the cement or asphalt company to really put it in line so residents can appreciate it and be able to pay it, so.
Well, the good, the, the good and the bad is, is we have a lot of that, that sidewalk, so we should be able to get a good volume discount.
Yes, yes.
Well, even the sidewalks that were replaced are now...
Yeah, I mean, the biggest...
I mean, mine were in there.
Yeah, the biggest concern is, you know, cement is going up every year, so we have to be mindful of that, and...
But that's why we're getting in front of it now, because I can say, when I first joined council, I recall seeing the Pacer scale of the streets, and I recall the conversation of eight years ago of how the street was only at, and forgive me, I keep forgetting which one it is, a three is good, right?
Three, three, three.
Oh, so it was at a six, and now you look at them, and they're down to a three, so technically, yeah, we should have done a long time ago, but...
Yeah, the other thing about that, too, is, is that, again, fixing the ditches will Yeah, the other thing about that, too, is that, again, fixing the ditches will go a long way towards the sidewalks, too, because, and again, to go back to my neighbors, you know, that I used as an example earlier, his sidewalk is all spalled, which is when the, the, the top, you know, quarter inch comes off and it becomes like a knife.
Yeah.
Because it's been water, freeze-off, freeze-off, water, you know, every time it rains, so.
Yep.
So, a lot of these things are, are, you know, a lot of it's just hand in hand, so if we can just kind of do a lot of this at once, we can solve a lot of problems.
Okay, one last question.
No, you said that, two last questions.
Okay, so, the dirt road, we know the, the, the origins of those, and they weren't calculated correctly into the, the, the housing costs or per housing, per household, to pay for that road when it originally got built.
Because that wasn't where it was.
Right, but, I mean, it wasn't like we could just say, okay, we're just gonna do the road and take care of it. Do you have a creative way of getting that road done, because it's...
It's included, the gravel roads are included in the project.
Okay.
So, those, those, those will be paved roads when we're done.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah, there's, we have 1.95 miles of, of...
Because that's the reason why we have never done it, because it wasn't assessed correctly, so.
All right.
Thank you.
I have many questions.
Might as well stand there, because we're in a...
Thanks.
I know you do, but that one, I, okay. Any other questions or discussions with that?
No.
Okay, so, transitioning from that, now we're gonna go to the action requests for the consideration approval of a contract resolution to accept proposal and approve contract for geotechnical engineering service, which is the core bore, boring, 22,100, and so basically that is the, I'm sorry, someone else can introduce this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going.
I can introduce you.
Go ahead.
I mean, we, we started talking about it a little bit earlier, and basically what we want to do to refine the, the estimate, that, you know, because right now we're talking around 20 million, we don't know if that's gonna go up, it's gonna go down, about how much. And so, in order for, for Scott to be able to refine the, the, the estimate, he needs to know what's underneath the road, so they'll do two, two core borings.
One to two per block.
One to two per, per block. They drill down three feet, they pull out that whole core, and then they ship it off to a lab, and they, they analyze it to, to figure out, you know, what, what's underneath. These cores are all going to have to be done at one point or another anyways, so it really kind of makes sense to do it now as one big group, because then we can get a, a firm estimate on, on what this is gonna cost, and we'll have the, the core boring, so that when, you know, should this not be approved, you know, and we go street by street, we'll at least know each street and what we're getting into. So, either way, we're going to have accurate estimates going into the future. The other thing that we found out last week in our, in our bond meeting is that, and we can't count on this, but if we pay the 22,100 for this, this particular study, and the voters approve, you know, we, we, we vote to put it on the ballot, and the ballot gets approved, the, the city can be reimbursed through that money that we raised through the millage for the money that we spent on the core borings.
22,100.
Right, but that's, that's not guaranteed, because obviously it depends...
I'm sorry.
Uh-uh. It's recording you. It recorded your whole conversation.
But, yeah, it's, but that's not guaranteed, so, you know, so we do have to pull the money out of somewhere, and I think Cheryl can talk about that.
So, what would make the price, because you're, you're going to do these bore analysis, right? So, what would make that price go up or down? Not the price for the core boring price, but based on what the analysis would bring back.
So, let's just say a gravel road, you know, we're under the assumption that the gravel roads will be reconstructed, so that's gonna be excavating down 17 inches, putting 12 inches of aggregate base down, and five inches of new asphalt. If that bore shows that there's 20 inches of good aggregate there now, we won't have to do that. All we'll have to do is take five inches down, put five inches of asphalt down.
Oh, good, okay.
So, you go from 1.3 million a mile to 600,000 a mile, and vice versa.
Yep.
We could find some that, you know, we think maybe aggregate's there and nothing's there, so do a little more work. But is what it's gonna do is tell us how much asphalt's there, or concrete, or a combination, and on gravel roads, how much aggregate's actually there.
Okay.
And Scott, this would need to be done anyways, right?
Yes.
As you're gonna, if, once we get, start doing the roads, you gotta do this regardless.
We do it before we do all roads. Usually, you know, we did a bunch of them before, starting in, we start this, 2004, and then when them streets ran out, we picked new streets, and we had them go out and do bores on them new streets. So, we've always done pavement cores.
Okay. Can you carry over an old analysis, or you need to redo it?
Well, no, no, if it's an old analysis, we know what was there, and we know what we did, so that's not included on here.
Okay.
These are just roads, we don't know what's there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, really? You can use data back that far?
Didn't change much.
Right, it's underground, so...
I mean, I know on your road, you got eight inch, eight to 12 inches of aggregate and five inches of asphalt.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
It's been up and down my street, huh? All right.
We're gonna sink one.
So, so, this, this needs to be voted on?
We need to do it before we even continue, give us a motion.
I'll make a motion then.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from G2 Consulting LLC for geotechnical engineering services and authorizes Giffords Webster to serve as project manager and sign the related documents.
I'll second.
Okay, now it's been moved in second. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes. Do you still have to do the bore analysis on non-paved roads?
That would be the gravel roads.
Yes, okay.
We would want to know what's there.
Okay, and that includes the 22,100.
Yeah.
How did you come up with G2 Consulting?
They've been doing work for the city through us since 2004. Yeah, yeah. They're out of Troy, they're a local company, they're a very good company, so they've done all these bores previously, and they do the material testing on the city's behalf every summer for the road jobs.
That would probably reduce the cost anyway, because they're familiar with the roads. I'd just like to see things kind of go out and give other people an opportunity to bid on them, but I can, I can understand this, so. And I think it's a great spring board to have for, for all the work that we're about to do with the infrastructure.
Yeah, and the good, the good thing is, is that G2, if you read through their proposal, that they're, they're going to have the core, you know, the contract will have the core bores and the analysis done with enough time for us to refine our estimate, and for us to, the committee, to look at it, and then to go back and forth a little bit more with the bond people and figure out exactly what we need for the, the millage language, which I didn't mention earlier, but that, the millage language is written by Miller Canfield, and they need a week to do it, so it has to be to them by August 5th, essentially.
Any other discussion?
Mary, if I could just ask one question of the engineer. Scott, so the, the borings are going to inform the street project's estimated cost. Will they also inform the, the Pacers ratings, or is that an entirely different process?
Entirely different, yeah.
And did you want to measure where we're gonna take the money from, for this?
From the fund balance, and there is a designated fund balance amount for street improvements that was anticipated for the Southfield Road project, but we did check with our auditors, and they said we can't use it for this purpose.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Next up is the discussion about the park policies. Ordinance update.
So, last month, council adopted the new park policies, and it creates a number of additional rules for, for the use of parks, restrictions on the use of parks, requiring of permits for use. So, our ordinance currently, the only language in our ordinance about prohibited use of parks deals with the timeframe between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So, in an effort to update our ordinance consistent with the new policies, the administrators asked that I prepare a language to amend the ordinance, which you'll see next, at the, your next regular meeting, but I wanted some direction from council. Currently, any violations of the park hours is misdemeanor offense, any, any unspecified violation is a misdemeanor on our ordinance. So, I wanted some direction from council, if they wanted these new policies to be enforced as misdemeanors or civil, municipal civil infractions, and then if, if we went the municipal civil infraction route, what the desired fines for offenses would be, so that I can build that into the ordinance that you'll see at your next meeting.
What, did you say the existing hours are?
Right now, it's the, no, you, there's, it's unlawful to be in the park between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Is there, is there an amount that is typical that cities charge for misdemeanor?
Well, the misdemeanors are up to the discretion of the court, so misdemeanor by definition is punishable by up to $500 and/or 93 days in Oakland County Jail. So, in my opinion, that's a little strict, harsh penalty. Maybe, maybe not for trespassing in the park after hours, but if you don't, if you forget your rental permit, I don't know that you should necessarily be subject to a misdemeanor violation, so that I would think would, would, it would be more appropriate for those, those types of offenses to be civil infractions. Those are similar to a parking ticket.
Great.
Where, where, you know, you're just, it's gonna cost you $100, $125, something like that for a violation, but it's not, you know, you're not subject to jail time and having a criminal record because you, you know, you didn't get your park permit, so.
Is it something that could be scaled? So, you could, you could say it's, the first offense is 100 bucks, second offense is 150, third offense is 500, you know, or something.
Typically, the court does that, they will add a $50 additional charge for each subsequent offense, but we could spell that out in the ordinance.
I agree with that.
So, we don't need to know the actual price, you just are asking if it's a misdemeanor or a civil infraction?
Yeah, just some, just some direction. I didn't want to come with an ordinance that made them all, all the offenses a misdemeanor, and then council said, well, no, let's send it back as a, we want it as a civil infraction, or similar to what we did with the dog ordinance, we, we kind of tweaked some of the fines in there, you know, what previously was a misdemeanor, if you didn't have your dog license, is now a civil infraction, and then there's a scaled fine based on the first, second, or third offense.
I think that, well, you believe a civil infraction, you'd say $500 and 93 days in jail for being over your time is a little bit...
Yeah, but I think it'd be good to scale it, so in case you get repeated offenders, there's an incentive not to...
Can we do more than $50, though? Like, the first one, the second one, the third one is 500. Just to make it hurt. But I agree with, if that's all we need to talk about, I do agree that it would be scaled and...
What's in place now? I mean...
Right now, there, again, the only ordinance prohibits the use of parks during certain hours, so, you know, the, the new policies that were adopted last month, park rental is by permit only, rental applicant must remain on site for the duration of the rental period, event organizers must have a printed copy of the rental permit to display if the police request, no transferring of a park permit, using parks at your own risk is not really a violation. The timeframe, you can't set up before 8:00 AM, all events must be completed by 9:00 PM, no parking vehicles on the grass or walkways in any time, including setup, parking is limited to designated areas for each park, and then the timeframe for 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM will, will remain there. There's also going to be included noise level, events must stay under 65 decibels at all times, prohibition against certain items like bounce houses, petting zoos, inflatables, animal rides, et cetera, those will all be included in the new ordinance. Deep frying, fireworks, glass containers, no smoking, vaping, or use of marijuana or other controlled substances on the park property during these, so those, those will all be incorporated in the new park policy, or, well, an amendment to the existing park rules with those. So, again, looking for some direction on civil infractions.
Do we have any infractions for electric scooters?
So, we're still talking about the parks?
We are, I was just asking, I mean, he went down the road of, you know...
No, this was, there was no mention of electric bird scooters in the park policy, so, I'm just asking.
So, we're, I think, civil infractions.
Yeah, I think civil is fine.
Civil, yep, scaled.
So, you mentioned that, so you say scaled, Scott, you mentioned the court has some kind of fines, have we set the fine?
Yeah, so that's what I, typically with the court, they, with their offenses, they, they add $50, it's just the court, but, so, if we enumerate specifically what we want the fines to be, that will get conveyed to the court, and the court will impose those fines.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, do we have a...
Could we do like, maybe 100 with the $50 every time, every, every subsequent offense or something?
Do you need to monitor the, the pricing right now?
Yeah, if you can give me some direction on it, that way I'll have...
Well, what's the offense?
100 hurts.
I mean, I don't hear no permit in hours.
After hours, though.
After hours, bounce houses, improper parking, oh my gosh.
I say 100, then 50, but this third time, it should be higher.
Yep.
If you're, if you're, if you're just, third time, it should hurt a little more.
That makes sense.
So, I say 250.
Go up to 350.
So, I got it.
And then what happens after the third time? You just keep fining them?
Third and subsequent would, yeah, would be similar, just we fines every time.
So, we max out a fine, we're at a max number?
Right.
Okay. A fixed number at the end, okay. So, what's that, 300?
That's what I'm asking.
500? Make it five?
So, I got, I got...
I think it should be 500.
250, 5 is good.
500.
So, you're gonna go from 100 to 150 to 500?
Yep.
That's high, I think that's high.
Well, no, that's a third offense, that's like, just totally ignoring.
No, he was giving an example, he said to start at 100, and so he's trying to get...
100, 200, 350, I, yeah.
That seems reasonable.
That's reasonable.
I'm not trying to kill anybody with fines, but...
Well, if somebody keeps doing 350, I'll...
I mean, I'll tell you right now, the, the court, on most of their misdemeanor offenses, they're, they're assessing fines of about 150 to $200, and that's on a, a misdemeanor where the, the max is up to 500, so. So, I think 100 to 200 and 300 would be in line with what, what the court currently is.
Can they still use the park even though they haven't paid? How long do they have to pay the ticket? Is that getting into too many details for you?
No, the, the...
But can they still use the park?
These, these will be tickets that would be issued, and they would be dealt with at the 46 District Court, so these, this, again, this is gonna be similar to if you have a parking ticket or something, it's not gonna prohibit you from using...
So, I can still park, okay.
Up until a certain time, how many tickets you get, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we boot them.
Just to make sure you bring a lot of cash, you know, no gambling to pay your fines at the park.
Okay, did we answer those questions then for you?
You did, thank you.
And Mary, I just wanted to point out that this conversation was precipitated because the police identified that there isn't currently an ordinance in place that they can enforce relative to the park rules, so by putting that in place, they do have enforcement powers. My question to our attorney is, is anyone other than the police empowered to issue the tickets?
So, right now, under the current ordinance, the director, deputy director, and foreman of the DPW, as well as the director and any deputy director of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City, have the authority to enforce these, so we, we can continue that, that enforcement ability for those individuals. Plus, generally, our code enforcement officer has the ability to enforce any of the city's ordinances, so if the code enforcement officer observed a violation, they, they could also enforce these.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that wasn't, we're good with that? No voting on that? So, let's go to the proclamation, and then you want to discuss the community service credits? Or is this was just information?
That's just information.
Okay, then. Next up was the consideration to declare, I really should wear glasses, the proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
I'll make a motion to declare the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Second. It's been moved in second, is there any discussion regarding it? So, just to let you know what, because I think this is our first time having this, and this is our first time.
Yeah.
So, what, what it is, is it declares the first Friday in June to be the National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Lathrow Village, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. And it was, and I'm trying to scan over it, it's from a teenager, and I don't know how to say her first name, it's Hadia.
Hadia.
In January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, and should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday. To help honor Hadia and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the 5th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked her classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. So, in addition to this proclamation, we're also being asked to wear orange on Friday So in addition to this proclamation, we're also being asked to wear orange on Friday to help raise awareness about gun violence.
Well, thank you.
Very interesting, and I mean, just exciting, just by turning on the news today and seeing, I think it was three women, just in the first five minutes of the news were shot, was disturbing to me, but that's a whole nother...
I think you need a voice vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do. So I was just giving my discussion part, sorry. Now, we're still in discussion part of it. So, all in favor of the proclamation to declare Friday National Gun Violence Awareness Day, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The proclamation is now approved. City administrator, you have anything for us?
Yes, thank you. Spring is definitely with us, summer is coming quickly. We had the Golden Gate Park cleanup this Friday, so happy to participate with Chris Clough, our recreation coordinator, and Pam, the treasurer, were out there working, so I want to thank Chris for coordinating it. I think the next park should be coming up in the next month, so stay tuned. And it was nice to see many of you at the Southfield Road corridor cleanup. It was, we picked up a lot of trash. I'm trying to figure out if we can get a civil infraction for people who throw out cigarette butts.
And Panera cups.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, and wine.
And wine, and wine.
Lots of interesting things along the side of the road. The garage sale is scheduled for June 21st to 23rd, where you can get the free permit in order to have your garage sale items out for the exchange with others. As you know, the park rules have been adopted, we're working on the ordinance related to that, and that will be coming to you most likely at your next meeting in June. DTE has been on site and visiting residents relative to informing them about service reliability. They have a open house scheduled for this Thursday, June 6, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the community room. Part of their strategy is also to have a tree trimming project next spring, so I'm sure they'll be sharing information about that. They said it'll be interactive, it's not an audience, they're sitting and talking to you, so they'll have stations where they can exchange information with residents, so we hope to have a good turnout for that, and if you could help spread the word, it's coming up quickly. The new resident handbook, it's been updated, and it's available online. The historic, we have three committees that we need applicants for. One is the Historic District Committee. Their next meeting is scheduled for June 10. I'm not sure they're going to have a quorum because we don't have enough people serving on the committee at the present time, so that may be problematic, so we're looking for applicants for that. The Planning Commission has an opening, and the Recreation Advisory Committee, and we will hope that everyone can turn in those applications by the end of next week, which would be June 14.
Did you say Planning Commission?
Has an opening?
Oh, DDA, sorry.
Yeah.
DDA. DDA has an opening. So those three. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing for me today.
Can I ask the city attorney?
Sure.
Any update on the apartment and the landscaping with the owner next door?
I haven't heard anything from, and I haven't heard anything from anybody, developer or resident, with respect to that.
You're speaking, Mr. Farrell?
Yeah.
Steph did drop by his house and left a note, but I don't know if he's responded.
Okay, can we follow, just to follow up this? Thank you. Anything from boards, commissions, committees?
Yeah, yep. Well, let me give an update on the Infrastructure Committee, just real briefly.
Oh, come on. Everybody's face is...
No, they, the...
We already talked about the boring.
Skip.
Yeah, the, the next Planning Commission meeting is at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 18. The main topic of discussion there will be, will be a public hearing for the PUD or Plan Unit Development, which is the tool that we're looking to add to our zoning ordinance to allow more flexibility in development in return for some community benefit provided by the, by the developer. I know there was some discussion of it on some of the social media, there were some people who implied they had some concerns, and if you do, I hope you will show to the public hearing, again, June 18, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't, I don't have a report on the committee, but I've just been noticing a lot of complaints about dogs running wild in the city that's been climbing the fence, and a lot of our residents are now being afraid to take walks.
I was reading that also, and just reading some of the comments, and I can't remember who said something, but it was interesting to me because if a dog has teeth, it's possible it could attack someone. So I don't think, because they were saying that certainly it was a pit bull, or it was a, what kind of dog was it?
Well, there were a couple, actually. There were about two, there were a few of them.
The original, the original one was a pit bull?
It was a pit bull that supposedly, that said, that she said, actually climbed over the fence, jumped over the fence.
And one was a broken leash, too, I think.
Our ordinance is for vicious dogs, period, and I, and maybe I read it wrong, that someone was asking if we had ordinance against pit bulls, but we don't have them.
No.
Specific.
Breed specific, correct.
Dog is vicious, it's a vicious animal, period.
And off of the leash, right?
Well, there was one that was on there for a broken leash, the dog got freaked, because it was pulling on the leash and it broke, but...
It's just starting to come up more and more, maybe we need to...
Probably because it's getting warmer out.
Have a, have a discussion about it, because I want to ride my bike, too, and I want our citizens to feel that we're doing something, so maybe we need to...
We did update the ordinance.
It's an enforcement issue.
Right, exactly.
So if there's problems and they need to get reported, the police department and the department can take action on them, as opposed to just putting it on Facebook, I mean, the police department doesn't monitor Facebook.
Well, I did break your rule, I did respond to the post.
Not a rule that you can't respond, it's just...
It's judgment. I'm giving them a hard time.
One person.
So it's a matter of them reporting it, and police or whoever following up on it?
Correct.
Okay, so we need a campaign.
Just informative that if there is, if there is an issue with an animal, you report it to the police department, and they will address that issue.
Okay.
And then just to piggyback off of what you're saying that you saw off of Facebook, I implore you that Facebook is not the media, excuse me, the villager, villager is not the place to go for the complaints that you want to be resolved. Granted, that's my evening reading, but I don't answer for, the joking that's going back and forth is because that's not the forum to get an answer. So if you're on your computer, phone, whatever, just go to the city's website, and city manager's email address is right there, and, or any of our email addresses there, and to email us, I'm pretty sure that everyone here responds to their emails, so that's your best bet for it to get reported. I think we've said that more than, and then to call the, the office, first would be to call the office. Or if you don't want to talk, you want to be anonymous, but you really wouldn't be, then you email. But, and I know someone just emailed me, I don't know if somebody's watching this, I don't know what you sent, so please resend it, it doesn't make sense, but, so, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
And then you on that side didn't get the memo, the orange, obviously.
No one told us. Wait till Friday.
So we can go down to the new residents?
Yep, so now, I'm gonna go in...
One more committee update. Parks and Rec. Music in the Park, how can we forget that, right?
I know, I guess she's gonna remind you.
Okay, Music in the Park will start June 26 with Lord Yancey, Jazz Fusion.
Was that who it was?
Yancey, Jazz Fusion, June 26. Well, we're starting June 26, and I have to say that I'm going to be working with Chris to try to figure out some sort of sale of food items, dinner items, because I think, you know, we want to leverage that and want to make sure that we've got a good chef in the house and just highlight his talents. And so for every artist, for example, Lord Yancey on the 26, July 3 Detroit Symphony, we're going to try to figure out what to serve on that Wednesday.
So you're pairing food and music?
For sale, for sale.
You're pairing it?
Yes. I'm not preparing anything, so...
Pairing.
I'm pairing, yes. Yes, we're pairing, yes. And that's it, basically, for Parks and Rec.
And yoga in the park is, yoga with the mayor's coming back in June in the park as soon as it stops raining, so. Anyone else have anything?
You know I have a couple.
I try.
Do we know, yeah, do we know if the, the wall over at Chase Bank, you know, the wall that collapsed, they put up a wood fence? Do we know if that's intended to be permanent or temporary?
No, it's not permanent.
Okay. And then, I know this is one near and dear to you, but the approach to precise MRI, the one that's all torn up for about a year now, is there any progress on that? Are they going to do anything with that?
Suzie met with them today, I haven't spoken to her yet, but she met with them today.
Okay. And did we get any, anywhere with the tank?
Me, or?
Yeah, you.
Yes, we, we got somewhere with the tank. We had someone have a look at it, analyze the, the infrastructure, we totally reviewed the upper, lower level, we also reviewed the wet well, and I'm supposed to be getting a phone call before the, the next council meeting, so...
Okay, but I mean, what about the person taking over the role?
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
So they were reviewing it, they wanted to get a sense of what it was before they said whether they were just doing it?
Right, they wanted to get a sense of what it was, whether or not it was even up to code, and they said, yeah, it's up to code, they're just trying to figure out what their schedule is, and they'll get back with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. I was holding them back because I thought we were gonna try to get to the...
They'll be there.
They'll be there.
To the, I'll still wait, I want to ask you about the establishment down the street, but I'll ask after.
Are we doing new business, or are we still?
Pardon me?
Are we doing new business?
We're kind of, we're kind of slowing it.
Okay, I've got one. I've got one. Okay, so Frank Solinsky personally thanks you for repairing our fire pit. He says he was really impressed with the fact that we got it done, and I didn't give up on anybody, and we ended up getting it done. So he said, hey, I've got another one for you, so, he says, and we need to really, I think we need to address it. So Lathrow Boulevard has decorative street signs. Three years ago, a DTE contractor backed into the street sign at Lathrow Boulevard in San Quentin, breaking it off at the base. The base is still there, you know, I notice it when he drive, when he does drive by. He did report it, and it was told it would, it would take about six months. Let's see, a generic sign was installed, but it obviously doesn't...
Was this DTE?
DTE did, did break it off.
Okay, you want to forward it to me? Because I've got the contact with DTE.
Well, I don't know if we should repair it, or if they, or if they should repair it.
They'll be here Thursday.
Okay, I will forward this to you. But while we're at it, I think a garbage truck broke off the one at Catalpa also. Portion of the side several years ago was, was reported, it was reported, I don't think it was repaired, so those are the two. So I will forward that to you. Yep, I'll forward that to you also. Other than that, impressive, you guys, we, we took care of it. Appreciate it.
Well, the congratulations actually goes to Mayor Garrett because she identified someone who actually would show up and do the work.
Thank you, Mayor Garrett. I'm glad this is videotaped.
Well, as long as you're getting people to show up, did you get somebody to show up for the House in the Woods? Did he go? Did he show up?
So, yeah, he called, and we did talk about it, and...
Two for two. Oh, man. I'm saying, that's good!
You're from the front street, we're all... All right, yeah, we'll talk about, we'll talk about that, because he, there is something they specifically asked for, and it was, it's coming to me, and I know we did it, it was some type of form that he asked, a report that was done for the House in the Woods.
Oh, maybe a survey?
Yes, it was some type of survey, yeah. And I said we did do it, so, yes, I did take care of it.
Is this a, is this a architect, or what is it?
It's a developer.
Developer, okay.
Yes, it is a developer, it was something specifically asked for, but, anything else? Seriously?
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to remind you, have a special meeting on June 22, that's a Saturday in the morning at 9:00. Did you want to come a little early and have breakfast, or you just want to come at 9:00? Okay, I'm good.
How about you just have breakfast there?
Yes, 9:00 a.m.
We couldn't, it's a working, I mean, eating, meeting, what's it called?
PUD ones?
An eating meeting?
That's a new one.
Seventeen?
I knew what I was trying to say.
Working breakfast.
Thank you.
And what are we covering?
The PUD is one item, and I think a couple of the other things have come up as well.
Budget amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to do an impromptu proclamation, but my birthday is Saturday.
On the 8th?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking anybody, anybody, no, no, good. So, teasing, I'm gonna try it one more time, was there anything else?
Donna had a couple, remember? She said, are you gonna...
No, I, I can hold, I can hold.
You can hold?
I really, I can hold it, because I need to check out something before I ask, I don't want to ask amiss.